How is this moving? I guess. It's in the city, but it's somewhere else. So we've been there. We've got a house, so. I'll just do that.
We're directing to YouTube.
Did you? Did you vote on this?
Ladies and gentlemen, we're live. We're live. We're live.
You're live. Oh. I stopped it like.
They're live.
You're really long.
Am I unlocked?
Yeah, this is live.
Okay, okay. So almost hang on here.
All right, well, good morning.
Fine.
Yeah. Good morning, welcome. Uh, several, sir. This is not December. September fourth meeting. President, by county commission. We stand and join in the wings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity and justice of.
Oh.
I would comment.
I will comment. Okay. Well, um, Tuesday, kind of late morning, I traveled back to Kentucky in my Thanksgiving break. Waited a little longer than usual. I usually leave at like five or six in the morning and get back. Mid afternoon, but with the winter weather, what you guys got on Monday. Monday night, early Tuesday there, I wanted to give. Road crews and stuff a chance to get caught up on everything, which they did. There was no problems. Um, it ended up being kind of a slushy snow at that point in time, so. Uh, roads were clear, interstates were clear all along the way, so. Um, big shout out to all the public work crews in Kentucky, Indiana, Missouri, Illinois. I said Missouri already, yes, I didn't do that in order and Kansas. Uh, for other work, so I was able to get home quickly, safely. Um, securely, uh, so on and so. Uh, also on Tuesday afternoon, we had the December meeting of the Department of Health Board of Directors. Did miss the Finance Oversight Committee meeting, uh, as I usually do by Zoom because I was traveling. Uh, but the general meeting items included opening welcomes and introductions. Approval of the October meeting minutes. Uh, Finance Oversight Committee report, Chief Executive Officers report by Michael Scala. Uh, Marketing and Development Report. Some of the loose items of business, which included a overview of the can care a station form. Uh, soliciting some information for the board's intent by some other continued services. Uh, distribution of the self evaluation. A form for the board, uh, that's being done by Survey Monkey, uh, filled mine out yesterday. An approval of the, uh, fiscal year twenty six board calendar. And, um, and annual review of the board, uh, conflict of interest disclosure. I think when actually when I was earlier than that. And the, uh, twenty twenty six slate of officers, annual review of committee work and the establishment. Of each one of the standing committees. Um, but also recognize resigning or, uh, Ford members or those that, uh, can't. Uh, serve any follow, uh, any further, um, due to bylaws. And we had holiday recognition upon me staff. Also finished with an executive session on matters, not elected person. Uh, yesterday headed back to work after the Thanksgiving break to try to get caught up. Um, that's going to be a work in progress. And to assist with the second go around in our annual inventory as the first one was kind of considered incomplete, so. Um, timing's not great on that, but it is something that needs to be done, so. And with that, solid back.
Okay, well, let's see, Monday and Tuesday caught up on some household issues, including hauling leaves from the property. Getting the HVAC service, a new kitchen faucet installed and two drains re figured in the bathroom. Uh, had to get some snow removal set up for the season. I got my dog his head physical and vaccinations. So that's mostly today. Um, Wednesday, um, I attended the Military Relations Committee meeting at Doubletree. Guest speaker was Colonel Jabari Miller. He gave a presentation on Fort Riley and what it will look like in the coming years. At this point, they're expecting the base to grow in number and activities, which is good news. And later that afternoon, I attended the West Loop Business Association Monthly Meeting at Rocky King's event space. Uh, the presentation was made by, um. Manhattan Chamber and the Potomac County Economic Development Directors. On the large businesses that have recently located in two counties. Bradley and Bud County. Also discussed where upcoming potential development opportunities to grow businesses in the region. It was a good discussion, lots of questions from the business people that were there. Um, and then updates forgiven by all businesses, uh, present, uh. And there won't be a meeting in December, but they will have a social in January. Uh, then later that afternoon yesterday, I reviewed the agenda and documents for today's meeting. Then went to Melfire practice at the church. But. Throughout all that, I've been, uh, following up on, on key seasons. We're getting close. Yes, so that's all I have.
Uh, Tuesday afternoon was the construction meeting for the fire remodel. Uh, works progressing on schedule. They were pointing concrete footings at the time of our meeting. Um. And after the meeting, staff was working on color selections for furnishings. Then Thursday evening with the special fireboard meeting. The proposed reorganization plans presented. We're gonna hear about later. There were questions and clarifications discussed, but at the end of meeting, they were all positive about moving forward with the plan. Well, everybody, we never, like I said, there were questions and clarifications about stuff, but. Once it was all done, everybody seems to think we'll be able to deal with. It's all good.
Great business. First time we had the motion to change orders once in construction. Twenty twenty five Peterson Ranch Road. It's on, uh, thirteen thousand nine hundred.
Uh, sorry, I sent Evan this morning. Good news.
That's definitely very good news.
All right, I always like to hear that, so, uh, go ahead and move to approve the change order to reduce the total project cost to three hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
Second half.
Been moved and second to approve the change order number one, chilling. Destruction from twenty twenty five Peterson Ranch Road. Improvement, uh, and D decked thirteen thousand nine hundred. All in favor?
I think.
Sure. Did you bring another pen when this was?
She's gonna wait till the end, say you could have stamped.
You got the stamp.
Yeah, I thought it's another manolo holder.
He said most improved by the county employee action. Under the law, maybe they admire all their firefighters, their issues, and they're seeing the labor delivered first apartment separation service.
Okay, I would make a motion to, um, through the. You know, resources. Changes. Uh, in, in, uh, personnel. As presented.
A second. Been moved and seconded to prove the requested by the county employee action form, so in favor. I, I.
Oh.
And it actually, I mean, county commission bottom news. He could ever be very. Stop headed and bullheaded. Refused to and put a stamp on it and they promptly sent it back. Commissioner for.
Are you saying I'm bullheaded? Oh, she man.
He knows I'm bullheaded and he wouldn't deny it. Block on the get flat there, though. Uh, and he changed the minutes, commissioners.
Didn't have any.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the December first meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the December first meeting of Riley County Commission, all in favor.
I.
Attentive to the gentleman's. The United States Press Conference. And that was reported up in the United.
But we're missing a day that we can't.
Commissioners, you say, no, ten fifteen, you know, we did not see any biz, but right, so.
Really? That's bad.
Yeah.
That's what's done before we had. Yeah, she's in first place in A S C style.
First time in a long time.
Yeah, a very, very long time. Hopefully, we're building a dynasty.
Well, congrats.
And maybe short of those, we'll see.
Should just take helps of that, that we had good seven year, eight year stretch. Hey, you know, what's up, man? There was a down year for Patriots.
Yeah.
In the playoffs with Tom Brady. So it's, it's.
Just a pause, it's not. Well, he blew out his ACL and Matt Castlin, and they were still one game away from making the playoffs that year.
Yeah.
No, I don't, I don't think the Chiefs are done. I think they're just gonna have to retool. I still think they got a couple.
Our star of, you know, tackle gives out.
Yep.
So.
I think that's.
Yeah. You, it's just.
I just think that the defense is kind of getting a little. I don't want to say old and gray, but.
Some.
Maybe more useful approach might be, might be important.
Hopefully, he can be better in your position.
Now, you might talk to Patrick in the off season and say, hey, maybe it's time to. Start laying off the whatever.
Not really. But he's got that eighteen eight sense.
Oh, I know. I've heard good things about him.
Eight seven. Also, the routine was one day job.
But I couldn't have to, their constabations. My ass. And also I'm a senior vice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured.
It's not Kobe or anything, eh?
Yeah.
It's not even, maybe it's choice or something. It's not Kobe.
I mean, I definitely want to try this something, but.
I agree.
It's gonna be. Well, that's a water in a salad.
Oxtails are probably twenty five bucks a piece.
Yeah, something like. But a lot of people are gonna give you order sheet. I mean, I would treat order two, right? So like you're all straight, a bunch of these. All words like sides for the table and they all got four different seats and then everything tries it. It's like, of course, you're supposed to be like seven, but it's like, yeah, we're four thing, you don't know. Yeah. I agree.
Guess if I made fifty million dollars a year, I guess I wouldn't care. Well, yeah, but you've got to think of all the high rollers in the Kansas City area. I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Means a big difference between that and going to Sullivan's or something.
Well, that's all right.
The hairdressers. Oh, yeah. I, I agree.
That's what they're gaining for. Yeah, that's.
I got a list of places to go that I'll say, that's what I'd like to find, trying to figure out. But you know, I'm one of those, I just kind of like, you wouldn't like to really like toll the wall. You know, I was in Bloomington last week. Uh, like. All the guys there are in, alone, so they know a place to go. That's someplace called Mix and. It's like pizza, strombolas, best stromboli I've ever had. Um. Yeah.
Feel like. Well, it's, it's. I can just see they're gonna be the best.
Yeah. Now, this was good. Service was great and they were really busy. Um, I don't know if that's because of the game. I don't think so, but. Hotel I was staying at was Phil's Fluffy Stairs. I didn't figure, you know, I would actually know anybody there. But we started walking around and boom, 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 boom. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. Oh, maybe, I guess. I guess. There was several people I'm like, who are you here? So I drove here and said, what?
Did we get printed one?
Yeah.
I printed, I printed mine off. You guys, I mean, they want.
Yeah, I.
I don't know what said, I forgot.
Great response.
I know, saying.
But thankfully, there's a community where everybody's.
Well, we have.
Peaceful.
I haven't been. I don't know a lot of this, that I have no idea. Yeah. And I know things was a little bit too. Active with someone.
That was kind of surprising. That's. Might have been vertical to the.
I mean, yeah. College, I mean, that's.
Interesting design. Yeah. Kind of a, like a bowl. Uh, can I understand why they haven't done a lot of upgrades to that?
It's called.
Do you have this one?
I can go out there and listen. Was it was called yesterday?
Here.
Tell you, go out here, just when it's starting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. Wow.
Roger. Good enough out of the nation we ran.
Yeah.
I was telling him my.
That's not gonna happen. I have that. Like, I need to build and. So I'm not a good eventual official.
Really.
It's not there, right?
I mean, how do they do it? And I'm so fast.
It's not.
Mine's extra wide. And I finally get it along the shelf. Gradual putting the stuff from like. Tools. It's there, you know, when it's sort of the yard and it's never there. Most, I take up the most second space. That's no responsibility.
Usually I don't want to be.
Yeah, so I can spread out.
But it's basic. Yeah, the only time that my daughter lives, I was there. We, we can't got very really good her videos that I am. She was back. We had some torn up or something. Scrambling things. I've got more stuff. Got one of those people looking hard. The four wheel, you know, we. We wanted to take stuff out, you know. People haul it up and pull it around the yard.
You've got a company.
This one's great, cause it's got. Four wheel drive. Thrill, and then you can dump it, you press a button, pops up. Which is. It does get away from you, though, to try to go down.
Oh, yeah. My bird on Thursday? Yeah, wow. It turned out amazing. I mean, I had the best one I've ever done. I, uh, used a, uh, uh, Tony Sastre's, uh, butter marinade. I mean, I just checked this crap out. It looked like it was on steroids. Yeah. And that's set overnight and then I. Put some virgin olive oil. And some horseradish Dijon on there covered coated it. Then I used the Weber Smokey Brown Sugar Rub. I do really. Yeah, and then I dunked it and I mean, it just sealed everything in there.
Yeah, smoking a lot bad.
I, I don't think I've ever had. Juicy white meat from a turkey as we did there. I mean, it just sucked it all in. That's how we're gonna do it from now on.
Be interesting, Steve, on the rest of this all played out. You really think they have to come. I didn't know the gene.
Right.
There's. He never, that's the last thing he's happened to. Something represented, talks to represent things.
I guess they, uh. Said the whole lineup goes out.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure you guys said originally, we can't expect them to come out, so.
So, yeah, maybe.
You know, and here's John, he fight this interesting. Uh. You know, of course, if everyone knows Pauline Klein is, well, they said in things about two years ago, bands were. Well, yeah, Texas saying. And then, uh, Susan brought to my attention. Yeah, but it's. Call, I'll say, you know, New York. So it's a regular trend. But they still legally, uh, in tennis, it's a place of rest, and see, they still.
Yeah, I mean, they still.
And when it's been in her comment to Susan, I was, oh, yeah, that's our home, we plan on. Over.
The other interesting thing is. Everybody says that, you know, he played, developed and everything under Coach Snyder, which he did. But he wasn't a Snyder recruit. He was actually a Ron Prince recruit and he came in as a tight end.
Your band in Kansas.
I was, you know, obviously. Boomed over quarterback, obviously, the rest is history, so. He's worked with the last three coaches.
It's gonna be interesting because I still can, as you know, I was hoping. Oh, there's someone like a south. See, now it's updated, because. Beyond those, he's not a head coach.
True, but you know, he's. Tuddled under, you know.
Still, it don't matter who you're tutored under. It's a totally different job. The, uh, who you hire as a DC, who you hire.
That's the key. That is the key right there. Because you could do all the. I would tell you, this is just me. If he comes back on board, probably the first hire I'm gonna make. Quite honestly, is Sean Snyder. I'd bring him back, not just for special teams, but I'd bring him back for operations because he ran the show with some fun. And now that transition, which is really, really good. Yeah.
I'll be real serious on, we'll see if he is looking. This still has her. I would think that it happens soon. Because all, or just calling current player. And everybody, once there's a show, he was. Yeah, that's gonna be. Don't expect to go to the playoff section.
That's like, I mean, the pressure will, you know. It'll be members also coming back here. Everybody's gonna expect. I mean, eight or nine months, it was eventually, but the sun would. But except. I, I think those are the clouds, mostly.
Yeah, I agree. But somebody even listens to the clouds speaking.
I think.
I don't think success, because if you have success, if you get out here.
Well, if, if they get. By college and well street, then if they don't, if he succeeds for two or three years. Somebody else is gonna be offering some varying money.
Well, it's not just that. They steal your coaching, they steal your players.
Yeah.
Even if they stay, it's the head coach can only do so much.
And that's the key. I mean, you think about the program right now, I mean. Eight, nine wins is kind of the threshold. I mean, quite honestly, just given the circumstances of things. Um, they don't have some of the grit to love like that Texas Tech or even Oklahoma State has, and you know, the Big Twelve. Obviously, with transition has kind of lost some of its luster. So it means even if you're able to win on a consistent basis at this point in time for national prominence, for sure, but. We've built up the facilities. You know, for sure. Um, I didn't even talk to the guys when we were in Indiana last week, you know, looking around. Their campus, their football facilities are. Um. They, they need some help, but they're gonna stay at the top. Let's just put it that way. Um, I kind of took offense to that when I told them, but it's, that's what it's gonna take if you want to be a football school. So I don't think. Yeah. So, you know, but. There's X's and O's, there's players. I think you almost have to put together a. Um. An HR.
GM does, the GM kind of handles.
Yeah.
I, I like that idea, the HR of football, the HR of college football. That would be a, a mess and a half. Wrangling all of that.
Watch.
Good challenge.
I mean, kind of a separate division of the compliance department, but I mean.
Right.
Um, something.
It's a lot of moving pieces.
I think maybe that's one of the reasons why I finally decided to step down and be surprised if. Three, four years down the road. Comes to a refresh and decides, man, I really want to coach again and ends up someplace else.
Is Nick Saban stepped out when he stepped out?
Well, Nick Saban's.
Mostly changes.
Quite a bit older. Let's just say quite a bit more boomer.
Yeah.
For lack of a better term.
Can still be coaching.
He could. I think he could be a great AD, to be honest with you. I mean, he understands sport, college sports just in general.
I've lived all the basketball coaches off. Feel a bit tired and. Tired messing with them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Bring you back to business.
Okay, I mean, if you're ready. Um, good morning, Commissioners, Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director. I'm here with your monthly update for human resources. Um, just going through the people policy and processes for Riley County. So, um, here's our numbers and, um, you can see they've been pretty consistent, if you can remember last month. Um, so we're sitting, um, these, all these numbers, I think, are pretty much been nothing outstanding in that. Um, I did make the change that you guys suggested last time, so our turnover rate does not include retirees. Or as needed, NPRN, so those, those intern positions or those positions, we expect not to last. Um, more than a thousand hours, so that puts us at ten point three, gives us a place where if we consistently look at that number and go through and pull back, we can see. Maybe where we're going, where we've been trending, um, and try to do a little more deep dives. I wanted to, I want to get that. Set, so we can use it as a base and then. set so we can use it as a base and then try to figure out if we're doing, if there's things we can do to improve it. Um, same here, I took out the ads, so it's exactly the same, right? Taking out the as needed PRN and interns. So that makes our tenure nine point seven three. Um, that's not a bad tenure. I mean, I don't think there's anything negative about that. It is less than we've had in the past. Um, and I would say that's probably, I I think we all can see that's probably the way that most employers are going. You know, there's just not as much loyalty to, yeah, I mean, it's it's workforce generational. Yeah, yeah. And I would say it's not just the generation of the person, but it's the mindset of our workforce now. Even even people who are fifty plus are more likely to change jobs than they had been ten years ago. Um, it's just an interesting thing. So we do have five openings, um, Health Department, Public Works and Human Resources and I will just mention to you the Human Resources job and at least one of those, I think two of those jobs in the Health Department are not posted. They're not being advertised, Human Resources. We pulled it because we were not getting we were not, we had a ton of candidates. We didn't, weren't getting somebody who had any type of clerical experience. We filled it temporarily with a person and we're gonna try to open it up a little closer to Christmas. Health Department is working on a couple of different things um, that they're gonna bring to you, like some reworking of some jobs and things. So um, they're working on it. They're just not being advertised at the moment. So if you go on our website, you won't see that many. All right. So we're still doing the highly effective uh Managers Program. That's been going really well. I've been having a lot of conversations with the participants about what they're enacting, what they're doing with their one-on-ones and their team meetings. Um, my thought for potentially next month is to get some actual um, s- some examples of what people put into place. So like the appraisers have put a couple of things in place, um, off the top of my head, I can't even think of another department, but maybe get you some actual examples of what they're doing. Certified Public Manager, um, both John and Greg have shared those at meetings and we've sent it out to other people as well. We currently have fifteen, approximately fifteen. It's a little bit gray, the list, because um, people could say they're interested, they're not necessarily signing up yet. And the city of Manhattan has said that they would be interested in seventy couple. We don't know what a couple will be, so.
Have we put any type of a game plan together for KAC next week for this?
No. We will. That's great. Thank you.
So maybe we need to have to.
Um, they, I think that the minimum was twenty-five. Um, they can, they can take up to thirty. Um, and truthfully, they didn't tell us a hard rock minimum, but they said they'd like to have twenty-five. So um, yeah, that's, thank you, John. Sometimes those obvious things, you don't even think of them. Um, so M A T C, slight light, slight update on that. I did work with Public Works and they um, they're, they're kind of rolling around the idea. We turn out you maintenance tech as an example, right? And so that we don't have a lot of positions in maintenance tech, where else can we apply it? But also Alvin um had contact with Beloit College and they have a pretty robust uh vehicle like operators. So they have a lot of those large equipment. And they are offering to do um a one-week training for vehicle operators. Um, so Alvin and I are researching a little bit on that. It would be in the spring between summer semester and the fall or spring semester when they end. Um, about a week long, they'd stay on campus, but we want to kind of really figure out which equipment do they have on site? What would they be training? Where would we, but where would our employees benefit? So might be an option too. That's not something that M A T C can offer that we're aware of because of the fact they just don't have those kinds of programs. So we'll keep trying to develop something there and bring that back to you as for training programs. Um, our evaluations, so almost all of the self-evaluations were complete when I uh submitted this two days ago. I think we're, we're basically there now. The department heads um and supervisors are finishing their part. The vast majority of evaluations are turned in, submitted and complete. Um, we, there are some that are still working, but we're, we're working together with those departments um and everyone is communicating. So if there is one or two that we can't get turned in by that date, we'll through that. I do have this point to discuss with you and I have some examples. So we discussed changing the department head evaluations. We discussed creating guide rails for those, for those conversations. And um Jacob and I worked together to create a form. So these next uh three slides are actually just one piece of paper, if you would get it. And so we want to put the um coma requirements front and center. So this statement will be on on our discussion topics. And then we were um thinking, and I presented this to the department heads yesterday for their input. But basically, these are the areas that I suggested we discuss. And Jacob kind of confirmed that they are all, I mean, if we stated these topics, we should be fine with the coma requirements. So would love your input, maybe think about it. These are the areas that you also want to have, you know, discussion on with the department heads. Um, and and Jacob, even though, please feel free if I kind of misexplain this, but as long as we are talking about the performance of the department head, we can talk about those things. There's things that we can't in general, discuss policy, procedure, you know, staffing plans. But you guys have this expectation that people will manage their department, manage their budget, manage their staff. And so we just need to focus on that department head's performance in these areas. Correct? Okay, good.
What did your department get? Did this kind of what they were?
That was the main question I asked them. And so then um they, I I told them it wasn't set in stone to get back to me. We just talked yesterday. I handed it out yesterday. So I'm asking you the same as I'm asking them. And if we get any input, less, more, different categories, I'll kind of implement that. They uh off first blush, there was no concerns. So um, if you guys would like, it's kind of difficult to read here, I can just email you the one page. Yeah, yeah, I think I wanted to get it in front of you, but I will do that. Um, okay, so I guess first, any questions or comments at this point? I don't want to. Yeah, okay. And this is kind of a big change and I don't want to brush over it, but also I think we have your guidance, so. Um, Employee Assistance Program, I think that we mentioned previously that we've had some challenges, particularly with our more um trauma-related employees. So fire and to some extent EMS, um, getting a timely um, appointment and also having someone that's can deal with the traumatic event that these people might be calling about. So Russell and I have been working on this. We've been meeting with Pawnee. Uh, we also met with Katie's Way to discuss these challenges and if they can meet them differently. Um, at this point, Pawnee has made a commitment to have timely uh appointments and ensure that that those trauma-informed um counselors are available for our staff. Um, and then Russell had a couple of people who had some experiences and we connected them back with Pawnee to help them do some um, evaluation. Uh, Katie's Way is also interested. They don't generally do EAP, but they do a lot of trauma. I mean, you guys have probably heard of that advertisement, the deep TMS that they offer, um, which is focused a lot on um military, but they would be interested in conversing with us as well. So and more to come, unless you all have some input. Um, so here's our numbers. Uh, you can see our average time to fill in November went down significantly. We, you know, some of those big jobs we had in the previous months, like a counselor position that takes a significant amount of time. We did not have any of those director level or high level jobs. Um, but also we received fewer applications. You know, we're normally receiving a hundred plus and uh it just slowed down in November. Um, and most of the PDs that we worked on were with the transition, this proposed transition of departments that we're talking about later. Um, so here's what we're, we're working on. Um, and then I did attach the pay scale for twenty twenty-six. This isn't changed. This is what you have previously approved with the budget process, but we'll be bringing the resolutions to you. And this is what we're publishing to the staff for their expected pay range. Anything else that you all would like to know or like to have from HR or less of, more of? Okay, all right. I appreciate your time.
Let's see some of the names of previous players and coaches back if he is the guy, you know.
Well, the other name is realize that how serious Charlie Dick, Charlie Dick is still with the house, sir. I don't realize.
That last night, and I pulled up G I S to show you just how close it is to ours.
She had these people who would cross the, cross the road from him. Said, yeah, he's still his house. Search for a sweeper and so.
Other interesting thing on that subject too, is Kentucky just fired their head coach, Mark Stewart. Was the receivers coach there, so be a possibility bringing him back. So they just, that actually, I think he's running back to actually.
All the same guys. All things were assuming he was here and I think he's just gonna stay there till.
And he should.
And he should, I mean, he should.
Needs to be fair to those kids too. And I I just think he's lost a good bunch of kids. Well, it's a different funny saying, but it's not always something that's anything.
But I'm not screwing, he was so miserable in the season.
Well, he had mentioned even a couple of years ago that he wasn't. And there was the thought of getting the add-one hour put in place. So that transition would always be theirs. It's that kind of stuff.
Things happen.
Well, and I I mentioned that example too, that I just work out so well. Not working out so well for him, it's just UCF the second time around either, you know.
All of the Paul, everyone's gonna be jockeying for new assistants as long as they see.
Lot of assistants looking for jobs.
And it'll be, one of the two that we have, but it could be jockeying for them. The two that we have currently.
They see it.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I mean.
Being the first out line.
And state may have not done themselves any favors to do. They, they, there's several guys that are happy with the raises they got, but getting their names mentioned.
Yeah, well, they said.
Well, I mean, they say the last three years, you know, Penn State has had like at least three guys, you know, per year drafted like in the first round off of the defense. I mean, at some point in time, it's gonna catch up to you, you know? That's nine guys over three years. I mean, that's a full defense if you I don't know what position specifically, but you lose a Micah Parsons, you use uh the safety that they had. I mean, it's gonna catch up to you, particularly in this environment. You're not gonna.
You're ready to talk about Cerise Sebastian?
Boy, I sure am. Okay, can you grow a football field with it maybe so you can incorporate it too?
I I was going to lead with um Commission should be very grateful. I'll turn down the LSU uh position for groundskeeper. Very lucrative contract, but I've
Buyout wasn't large enough.
No, I'll be, I'll be committed to the community in which I grew up. So you're stuck with me at least for a little bit longer. So deep breath on that. But Mike Bowler with the Riley County Noxious Weed H H W Staff Update for December. Um, happy to report that we are about ninety-five percent complete with our mowing. Uh, obviously the snowing set us back a little bit. We normally do mow all the way into December, so we're not behind. Uh, I've often talked about, we mow about twenty-seven hundred miles of roads out a year from New York to LA is about where we mowed and we can see the beach from where we're at. So we're, we're pretty close, pretty close to my neighbors. Stockdale Park area is is our last part we've got to mow. Yeah, so that 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 is the beach area. So so Rich, be patient. We haven't forgot yet, but as soon as the snow goes away and we're getting pretty close to be out mowing again. So we'll get you taken care of here real soon. So if anybody else is in that area wondering, that's our last part that we have to, to take care of from mowing. Sprayers and spray rentals are all in the process of being winterized and we did get our uh spray trucks changed over to snow plows just in time for our first snow removal of December first. Uh, first one, I think, went pretty well. Oftentimes when we get called out, the first one of the year, there's always an equipment issue or somebody doesn't get called or something like that. And I want to commend uh Public Works and my staff. I think we did a good job of getting out there and and getting it taken care of. And uh, we, we often get feedback from the people that live in the county. They're very happy with our snow removal. So that's a good thing. Uh, I did have an opportunity to be on Within Reason on K-Man this last month. And uh, one of the topics that came up is Amer Honeysuckle. This is an extremely invasive uh bush that grows. We have it in a lot of the draws in our urban area here in Riley County. Shawnee County has it, Overland Park area. Um, what's unique about this plant is it often does not affect yields of crops. And and we at the weed department are always very ag-based. Um, what has driven the ship on this one is that its growth cycle is extreme. Uh, in fact, right now, if you go by any area that still has some, you know, draws or ground cover, you will see this is still green. It is still green this time of year. And because of that reason, it chokes out everything else that's around it. It also has an aleopathic nature to it. And so it will kill stuff that's on the ground around it. Um, and it is greatly affecting our forested areas or draws. It doesn't really affect our ag areas. Uh, pasture ground, not so much unless it's in the draw. We don't have a lot of this out in the county. We have a tremendous amount of it in the city of Manhattan, up on Stag Hill, that sort of thing. Um, I just talked to the Kansas Department of Ag. Uh, it will be coming a noxious weed uh here in twenty twenty-six, probably by spring. And I, I did successfully argue with the Kansas Department of Ag to make it a Class C, which a Class C only requires the county to contain populations as opposed to reduce populations. It's a big difference in terms of expense and in treating it. Uh, but I wanted to make the commissioners aware of what it looked like, where it was. I've spoke on this topic before. Um, and we'll probably, I'll probably be seeking some guidance of what the commission wants us to do moving forward as far as how aggressively we attack it, what we really do. I hate to be that department head that says, look, depending on how aggressive we are, then I need to ask what kind of resources we're going to have, but it is my job to inform the uh commission that we just do not have the resources currently to really attack this. Um, so it's a case of the state has made a law and now it's the local government, county's responsibility to enact that law. Um, so probably moving forward as this comes, we're gonna start getting some phone calls that this stuff is on county ground and what are you doing to remove it and treating it? I will say that the state only requires us to kill it. Um, and I know like Rich hates eastern red cedar, but you can imagine if we just killed all the eastern red cedar and still left them standing there. There's a tree or a dead tree. It's still, and the, and the bush is the same way. Its biomass will not break down like weeds do. Um, so the state requires us just to kill it, but the reality Um, so the state requires us just to kill it, but the reality of it is you've got to cut it out and then treat the stuff if you're really going to treat it. And and you can't just spray it because you cannot walk back into honeysuckle. It's a very dense bush, and so there's no walking back into it to spray it. So I I really don't know what treatment's going to look like. I have, like I said, I've had many conversations with Kansas Department of Ag about this, my concerns about it. Um. And so, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the commission is aware where we're at moving forward and what treatment may or may not look like. Uh, on the HHW side, we do have our Howie's recycling uh trailer out on December thirteenth. Um, we had a hundred and fifteen participants in that uh in four hours in the month of November. Our record is a hundred and eighty-two in four hours, so that's a very wildly popular event. We do still have recycled latex paint, as I always mentioned. Uh, so if you're in need of that, please come out. And then HHW facilities, we have several things to discuss. HHW facilities across the state are really fighting um disposal cost of lithium ion and HHW material. But yet the demand for this service is going through the roof. Uh, in an email I sent to the commissioners there, I I mentioned that Overland Park has a six-week waiting period just to drop off HHW material. Uh, so the demand is going through the roof, but the costs are rising dramatically. Um, some counties are seeing twenty-five to thirty percent cost in disposal. We're very fortunate here in Riley County that our vendor that we have now. Um, we've managed to keep costs down, but we are ourselves looking at a five to a ten percent increase moving forward. But we just have to watch as other communities in and around our area decide not to participate or spend the cost of disposing of this material. There's still a demand for it, and so we have to police and make sure that those neighboring counties don't then just drive it to our county and have us pay for it. And so something we're policing and keep an eye on, and again, just something I wanted to make the commission aware of. Uh, Big Lakes Regional Meeting will be in Riley County on December eighteenth. Uh, that is where I uh meet with all other ten counties of Big Lakes and we help set the budget for Big Lakes Regional. So we have clearly two different budgets. We have the Riley County budget and we have the Big Lakes Regional uh budgets operating kind of two different programs through our facility out there. So that meeting will take place on the eighteenth. Uh, and then just to uh sum up what we did in the month of November, we did help with the election staff and the deployment and retrieval of election equipment. As always, the election staff has that planned out to a T. Uh, so we just have to show up and follow what they say to do to a T and it makes it really easy for us. We can kind of turn our brains off, but we do hear about it.
We understand the reason why. Yes, to do at home.
Right.
Yeah, when it, when I got hired, I asked if I had an issue with helping the elections deploy uh election equipment and my answer was, uh, no, I don't have a. And then finally, I will be attending the KAC conference uh next week and look forward to uh seeing all the other weed directors that are down there and interact with along the other counties that are participating in that. So I'm looking forward to that. With that, I stand for any questions you may have, and please reach out to me as you kind of ponder the a mere honeysuckle and the issue we have moving forward. I would like to have some input back from the commissioners of what they would kind of wanting to see on that. I can assure you that as that becomes law, we will be getting some phone calls from residents wanting to know when are you gonna be removing this as the word gets out on this? And so again, I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like, given the personnel and the budget we have to work with. This is, this is not just adding another weed, it's adding a bush, a tree. And and we really become less about a weed department and we're about a forestry department and we're just not really built for that. So I don't know what that's exactly going to look like, but certainly interesting input the commissioners may have.
Okay. Um, on the, going back to the one about uh. The facilities, you talked about. Require that, and I guess you said a couple of states do require deposits on some of those on batter um.
Yes, yes, I'm glad you brought that up. I did kind of skim over that. Um, Colorado and Missouri here recently, because of the cost of HHWs are going up. Um, the state has passed uh deposits, latex paint is one of them. The state of Colorado and Missouri, every bucket of latex paint you you buy, there's a fifty percent or a fifty cent, I should say, deposit per gallon. And that goes towards uh HHWs in the state to help offset the cost of processing latex paint, which ironically is not a hazardous waste. It's it's a non hazardous. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it it's non hazardous.
It's a deposit, but then you get it back and you bring the empty bucket back.
Well, that that is.
A deposit.
Well, what it does, it subsidized a company called uh Green Sheen and they're out of Denver and they go all over the states that have this and they pick it all up for you. No longer HHWs have to process any latex paint. All you gotta do is stack it on a pallet. They come, pick it up, they take it back, they process it, they make new latex paint out of it and it goes back out. So it's a a kind of a cycle, but it completely takes HHWs out of the equation that we have to deal with it. They're also doing the same thing with lithium ion batteries. Lithium ion batteries, the demand to get them out of our solid waste stream, as you know, is going up. And if we don't do that, our insurance premiums at the waste stations start going up exponentially. So counties are realizing this and they're needing to pull this, extract that from our solid waste stream. But then these are being dumped at the HHWs and then, of course, the cost for disposal was going up. And I've I've been inquired, I've had inquiries from neighboring counties, clearly with the implication bringing, can we just bring this stuff to you guys and you guys fix it? And they weren't really happy with my response of saying, well, Mills, your county needs to to deal with this and I don't know where that's gonna go either, but I'm glad you brought it.
So when it's 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 not really a deposit, it's just an extra charge. I'm sure the deposit seems like you get it back.
Ah, okay, yeah, yeah.
And they might call it that, but it's.
It it is an extra charge and KDHE has been uh trying to lobby with the state here in Kansas and there is just not traction right now because we're concerned about putting additional burdens on retailers, you know, and additional cost of goods and services. And so there's just not traction for it right now. But what that means is it's a cost that county, local government gets to continue to absorb.
I know lithium might be the big, you know, like the two batteries, but aren't aren't those all grounded? Yes, aren't those those lithium ions?
Yeah, they can be, uh, like hearing aid batteries are not, they're actually alkaline. Um, but yeah, most of your button batteries are lithium ion, yes. There are lots of lithium ion batteries out there and and even electric cars are lithium ion. They're just smaller batteries stacked in lines. It's just, but uh, uh, yeah, electric car battery is still about the size of a flashlight battery. It's just, there's hundreds of them. So same, same deal, same process. But good question, lots lots of things for our county to ponder that directly affect us moving forward, for sure.
You're just on the a mere honeysuckle. I mean, the commission probably used some guidance from you on your thoughts on how to start proceeding on that. I'm not sure they know a lot about the a mere honeysuckle and what it would take to start.
Sure.
And so probably good for you to get on the agenda and things and recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Cause then.
Sarah Long Creek, all long Creek.
Oh, it's infested and and in removing it really from our parks and stuff would be measured. That's not just in the tens of thousands, but probably in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Uh, and I'm I'm not exaggerating, I'm not trying to get your attention with that, it's just.
Is that just in the county problem?
Uh, no, that that would be the city too, and we do have an agreement with the city that they do treat noxious weed within the city. The county doesn't do that. Um, and.
There's a lot of same.
Oh, it's it's a completely infested, completely infested. Um, any street up Stag Hill, drive up Stag Hill and look in the ditches and it's it's infested with it. So I'll certainly come back with some recommendations and and I'm I'm kind of. I just at this point, I'm not certain what that's going to look like and I've made the state, I've made the state aware of my concerns, for sure. Thanks for your time this morning.
I'm ready. Rich, I didn't know you lived on the beach. Until today.
Well, for a time.
Cause you're the midnight party, it's a little far important, maybe, and it really lives in that area too.
Same.
Morning, Commissioner Anna Burson, uh, with the Riley County Appraisers Office here to give you the monthly staff update. On ag use side, our agricultural appraisers, processing sales, um, approximately thirty-eight involved agricultural land this year. Um, to date, there have been thirteen farm home sites. Um, she is finalizing the ag use review of the remaining unreturned ag maps and all annual review. Um, all parcels that were due for reinspection have been completed. Um, there have been recent replats, um, and agricultural use property. And in this process, that's basically converting now what's a hundred and one parcels from agricultural use to market land. And so it's not just a simple flip the switch and make it happen. That takes working with our GIS department, getting those maps updated, switching all of that from an agricultural to a market uh land. Um, and so she's working through those. Um, processing on appraisal support, again, they're processing changes to personal property records as they're received, managing those residential work files, reviewing the entry of our field staff, preparing for those legislative changes, assisting with the field data collection as needed, um, assisting as well uh with answering any tax questions on tax bills. So sometimes we fill those calls and they they start up there, working with the treasurer's office on those two um, and preparing to set those uh personal property values. On the residential side, there are nine hundred and nine residential sales to date with an average median sell price of two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and. And I'm sorry, a median sell price of two hundred and seventy-one thousand and an average sell price of three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Um. Currently, our median sales ratio is still sitting at that ninety-three percent. Uh, we continue to prioritize those sales inspections uh this month along with new construction permits. There are four hundred and eighty-nine new permits for twenty twenty-five. Of those eighty-one were new dwellings. Um, with rechecks from last year, we're working through the five hundred and twenty-three active permits. Um, annual review of residential and vacant land's been completed. Um, the residential sales trend is up roughly seven percent over last year. Um, so it's getting all of those, all of that data, looking at all of the sales and we got more data in there and it's roughly seven percent. And that doesn't mean all property values are going up seven percent. I just want to preface that again. Commercial, there are roughly twenty-four commercial sales to date. Our commercial teams completed their depreciation analysis. They've begun work on the income and have completed the vacancy studies of the various commercial property types. There are roughly eighty permits relating to commercial properties. Um, and the commercial team continues to inspect both commercial and residential properties um into the new year. On BOTA updates, let me shrink that a smidge. On the BOTA updates, um, again, this list has shrunk um some more. Uh, specifically when you look at the uh the Genesis Health Club that you guys recently signed and then those uh that last twenty twenty-five of Manhattan Marketplace, those values were agreed upon. So that's gonna be another fifteen million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred um of the county value that was being protested that has been settled. Uh, overall, the adjustments roughly five hundred and twenty thousand and appraised was what they initially wanted and the potential loss it would have been, the potential loss could have been, would have been uh roughly seven point nine million. So getting those settled off the books, um, this is again, another huge um huge win. Just happy to see that list continue to dwindle. On the exemptions, um, we have received some um decisions back on exemptions, continue to get those back. Um, the Riley Methodist Church was denied. Fancy Creek Cemetery, there was two properties, those were granted. Um, and then we received five new applications from Riley County. Um, those are now on the list for properties owned um by Riley County with some of those changes. Um. Just quick on other projects, just uh just for some additional information just to share on training and quality control. So the workload has increased significantly for both myself and my team. Uh, we've worked diligently to process sales and are now catching up on building permits. Much of this delay was really just due to this substantial amount of time required for training, um, quality control and conducting property data collection myself as well. Um, the strategy's been it um been to invest the time upfront to ensure that that training is completed, that there's understanding of the processes so that we can work towards more efficiencies into this new year. Um, as and as the year progresses, uh, we'll continue pushing forward um over these next two months to finish the year strong. Um, staff reviews, we have completed all of our staff reviews. We had those completed early to ensure that was done timely. Uh, exemption applications, I mean, as you can see, uh, those exemption applications continue to change. We had one that uh neither party initially had requested a hearing. Um, the board scheduled it for a hearing. It was originally set for December nineteenth. That did get continued. Um, and they have a um an attorney representing them on that, on that case. And so we will also have an attorney representing us. Um, I don't know what date that's gonna be held yet, but occasionally those exemptions can go to hearing. Um, Schneider Beacon Parcel Search, our new parcel search is live and we are excited to offer the public a more user-friendly platform with uh more information and tools uh than previously available. Like, like all things new, we're working through kinks and as something comes up, um. But so far, the feedback's been pretty positive and we're happy to have that up and running. And so, yes, definitely thank you to our IT team, our GIS team, um, the treasurers and just the the continued communication um helps to ensure a smooth transition. Um, on the payment under protest, some of those are starting to come in, so we are holding payment under protest hearings as um as they come through. Um, legislative issues, I really just want to express gratitude to you guys as our commissioners. Um, you know, during that special committee on taxation a couple of weeks back, there were just several comments made about appraisers and the process. Uh, much of it coming from individuals really who either don't understand the process or choose not to. Unfortunately, many legislators and even some county commissioners either lack the clear understanding of how budgets and mail levies are relate or intentionally shift the blame for tax increases onto the appraisal process, really just to avoid accountability. So I've continued and will continue to do the best I can just to educate others on our role and why the system we have does work, um, even if it is not the narrative that's being uh spun out there regularly. So I really do appreciate you guys, um, you know, I feel like we do have support, communication, um. And if you have questions, do you have any questions for me?
What on the BOTA step? Except for one property, everything is twenty-four, twenty-five, which is. You have an.
Yes.
One, so they're.
Yes. Yeah. We we got a lot of those settled. Um, some of that came because the they filed the appraisers, the the appraisals five years later. And so again, that's part of our discussion during our um upcoming, upcoming. Later this this morning, we'll talk a little bit more on that and that that's a concern because I mean, these could have been done years ago, had that information been available years ago um versus providing it five years later and earning interest on the taxpayer's dime. Um, when um it could have been handled much more efficiently.
The one old one said, since they didn't have the hearing until.
No, they got continued. They requested a continuance and then multiple dates were presented. We we were uh open to several dates and the um tax rep was not. And so um it seems like they just can't make the time for the hearing, which is unfortunate. Um, and that's another thing that really does need to be addressed, especially when it's tax reps asking for those continuances over and over. Um, the interest should stop. I mean, gotta draw the line somewhere. This is, this is out of control.
One year, one like.
Yeah. You're gonna forfeit interest if you have to continue again. I mean, it's, and as you can see, it's one.
I think BOTA's pretty much caught up on most of these cases, so you can get them done within a year. There's no excuse for it.
No. And yeah, and so we had that scheduled back in July. They offered some additional dates. We were yes, they were no. Well, at what point do you force the hand? Like, this is, this is the day. You either, you're either there or the hearing's held without you. I I mean, that's just the reality of it. And and evidence wise, that there's, they don't exchange anything. So up until thirty days before the hearing, so it's unfortunate.
Don Beacon thing, I did look on that just to see.
Mm-hmm.
The new stuff was, needs to be something, an abbreviation chart, because there's a lot of abbreviations on there.
On on like the property record cards, on on the record cards?
Record cards.
Okay.
You know.
Sure, like, like put together some sort of a, and so those are the same property record cards that you get from our office. But yeah, I could see how that could be useful to put something out there um that explains some of the codes, sure.
I think you guys are saying, here's. I think you guys say, and here's the, because there were some, and I'm not sure what it meant, some of the stuff on there.
On the site itself or just on the individual property?
Same basically.
Yeah, so, so yeah, that's, that's information that people can request from our office specifically. Now we've just made it easily available, so you can just print it right there. But yeah, I can, I can look into seeing if we can come up with a, just a reference page. Thank you, thank you. Oh, FYI, I will be at KAC next week and then I also do plan to take the week of Christmas off, so just letting you know. Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, we'll be back.
I think, I'm pretty sure we are. Yeah, so I will, I will reach out and find out who's going to be on us, make sure they're numbered.
Morning Commissioners, Russell Stuckey, Emergency Services Director, Fire Chief. So I have our November staff update for you. Mostly fairly normal stuff. Had our first round of fairly severe winter weather, so got through that.
Oh, that's severe. Ooh, I hate to see what's gonna happen.
Especially in a teenage sports car, right? But anyway, we met with the city and, and in particular, you know, just to readdress what's been put out is on Anderson Avenue here in town, they're going to be pretty aggressive this winter on closing that down when there's going to be precipitation, just because it's such narrow lanes and head-to-head traffic. Brian Johnson with the city initiated a meeting where we discussed that thoroughly and talked about getting the information out through all the PIOs and everything, so there was a lot of coordination there. And so that was good. Obviously, working with the building committee and, and progressing on the EM Fire, EOC building remodel. That seems to be going well. Obviously been working with HR on some potential organizational things that we'll talk about later in the meetings. On the plant, on my planner, Robert Cox section, I know I had a commissioner to ask about. He said he's met with eighteen department heads and we don't have eighteen department heads, but he's including our CPD and Extension and some of those other organizations that we work with and need emergency action plans and, and those kind of, so he's kind of lumping all them in together. So not necessarily only county department heads. Another thing, he's obviously working on a lot of things. The other significant thing he's working on is, is working with FORY to get the cybersecurity annex to our emergency operations plan a little more up to date and, and effective. So that's another big thing. We got the UTVs ordered that you approved last month, and so they should be in in January. And so I have it on the top of the list. You mentioned a photo op, and so we'll make sure we, we, we get something set up there. We've got all the City of Riley Fire Department consolidation completed and done inventory of their equipment and, and decided what is useful for us and, and what is not. And then they will be working on disposing of the equipment we didn't decide, we just decided not to take in. So that has all went well. Then the other big thing that we've got accomplished is Station 110 in University Park, as you know, is complete and we have our ribbon fitting scheduled for next Monday. So hopefully you can all attend and, and
Good for the warm-up.
No promises. So then the other activity we have going on is down in Hunter's Island at Station 116. The siding and roofing and insulation remodel that we got going on down there. So that process has got started and so those trucks aren't actually in that station right now because there's not going to be a roof or heat for, here for a little while, so they've been distributed out to other fire stations and then we'll just have to respond from there for, for the few weeks that, that activity's going on down there. And then you can see on the different kind of normal pace of applications and, and staffing, holding pretty steady. Not necessarily gaining the ground, but we're not really losing the ground either, so we're holding on pretty well there. Then I just realized I forgot to print, print off the run numbers for you, so I'll have to get those to you later. Any questions for me? Alright, thanks.
Everybody missed you. Across the board. So the plan, clarify, each danger, about some
So we're concerned that, you're starting to find to work that, 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 today. The view that, how the, where this, I can see success, it's something, it's going to be a contingent on the, the district, obviously. Yes.
Look, I love it, it's like, it's yours, I'm saying, that's not, that's not, that's the way, it's a, it's a
Yes. No pressure, but it's And I think, as always, I think too, it's disgusting. It's disgusting, but they, you know, it's, yes, there's And that was
Yeah, we do, we do, we do, we do.
Yes.
Okay. I would say Johnson. So we can, you know, you're down. He might have a constitution. You're in the past, I think, and so hopefully chose not to do it. You should ask him, let him get your insight.
I gotta ask, what is up with your cohorts over in the state of Missouri?
I left a little long time ago.
I think those people over in MDOT, they just sit there and throw darts at a map and go, this is where we're gonna work, this is where we're gonna work. This bridge doesn't need to be fixed, so we're gonna go ahead and do it anyway. Holy cow. Like every other five miles, it's like, there was a stretch of like twenty miles where they just had it barricaded off and there was nothing going on.
Well, there's some of those chances.
Thirty mile stretch?
Yeah.
Blocking one lane off?
Less than a mile or so, maybe they're gonna
I don't understand that.
So, I don't know. High 70, and I've been there a little while, but high 70, people, I sort of used to be. Cloud grand, right?
Yeah. I'm trying
Which it need to be fixed, but
Well, they're
They did a good job.
Different places on the Kansas City side and then kind of in and around from London. They're building an elevated platform in between east and west. I'm trying to figure out what it is. I, I wonder if that's a high-speed rail they were talking about with he gets to Saint Louis. They're supposed to take like two hours or something to get from the power banks of Kansas City to Saint Louis, and I'm wondering if that's what that is.
Good morning Commissioners, Amanda Webb, Planning Director, here with Planning and Development's monthly staff update. Keats, I know we like to talk about that and you probably already have a lot of the informational share, but it's okay to share it again. So funding-wise, everything is going accordingly. We're, we're getting the things each entity needs to keep things moving along. The Kansas Water Office, that technical assistance grant that we received for engineering and design, we have depleted that one. I have submitted final closeout paperwork, so that one is done. But the others are ongoing or, or we've been, of course, approved, but maybe haven't necessarily started it yet. But everything is, is going okay there. Easements, I'm sure you already know, we received all of our permanent easements. We're still working on a few temporary easements. But that's, it's my understanding we're, we're receiving a few more and, and again, I just sincerely think And, and again, I just sincerely thank Catherine and Jacob for all the work and Jacob's office, Shannon in there, for all the work that they've done to get these easements from folks. We're getting there. I know we're pretty close, but of course, we did get the information from USDA that we can proceed, even without every single temporary easement and just kind of work on it concurrently. So that's, that's good news. So we're able to move forward there. And again, I, I thank Sam and Brian over at BG for all the work they've been doing. So it's just made this process a little bit, little bit easier to do. We did just send out a letter to all property owners. They received project notes, just general project notes for when construction starts, just to kind of know what to expect. That information's also been posted on the Keats website if anybody wants to take a look, just informational for, again, once construction starts next year. And then each property owner also received a, an exhibit specific to their properties, so they can see exactly where the lines and the components are gonna go, where the easements are. Whoever has permanent easements, where those are, they have all of that up to date information specific to each of their properties. So that letter went out earlier this week, so we might receive some questions, just some clarifications. Again, a lot of it's technical, so we would send that to BG. But again, just really doing our best to keep folks updated, so they're aware of what's happening as we get closer and closer to breaking ground out there. So. Let's see. So any saying, any questions with. Keats or anything, notes that I missed? We're getting there. Getting close. All right. Next thing we're getting close with is our comprehensive plan update. So we had our public hearing with the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board earlier this week on Monday evening. We received no public comments during that hearing and the board did recommend forwarding a recommendation of approval to you folks. So next step is Riley County Planning Board Public Hearing next Monday evening here, 7:00 PM. We'll see what we get from there. And again, it's still open right now for anybody to provide comment. You don't have to only do it during the public hearing. Can be done at any time. Just send me a email, come visit me, give me a call. Any of those options, of course, will work to get me any comments that, that folks out in the public have, or if you're hearing anything, please send them my way so that those can get incorporated. After the public hearing on Monday evening, we'll send everything else that we've gotten from Stan Tech that they don't already have. They'll work the remainder of that week to get everything updated and incorporated, including the future land use map. And then it'll be before you folks on the eighteenth for hopeful adoption. And then pending that, we'll have a big old party on the nineteenth. So. So. Hopefully, we can do that. Home in the Heartland Grant, as we talked about before and we talked earlier this week, that website is live. Folks can go there and can apply for the program. And I met with Allison Muth with the Chamber earlier this week on Tuesday after we'd had our conversation on Monday. I was able to fill her in on all of that. We have three applicants, three applications. They are all eligible. They meet the criteria that was set out. So she has issued preapproval for those folks. All three bring remote jobs with them. They are, of course, outside of the state of Kansas, which is, of course, the requirement, but they're all bringing remote jobs with them that exceed the required household income. Some of them are bringing, I believe there's one that's just solo coming. And then the others have at least some semblance of family, maybe a spouse and, and child or a child. So. So the potential to have, again, at least a few more residents here in the county. And it's just kind of a matter of as we move through, making sure they do what they need to do on our end. And then we, we need to make sure they have what they need. So. So just updating on that. The other thing that Allison and Malu are. Our Make My Move contact has worked on is a kind of a one page. You know, informational sheet that they're gonna supply to some of our larger employers who are actively recruiting employees from out of the area. Just kind of as information that they can use to maybe help kind of. Publicize the, the, the program and, you know, provide that incentive. Of course, there's no guarantee that just because somebody's, you know, would come from and be hired for a certain employee that, or employer that they would get the incentive. But it's just another one of those ways that we can kind of publicize our program and kind of help maybe get some more, more folks into these, into these positions, especially those from out of state. So. So that is probably gonna go pretty quick, especially with, again, all the partnerships we're trying to work on out there. Still waiting on the small cities and other folks to maybe share information about additional non cash incentives. As we talked about before, the Chamber has talked about after hours passes and a couple other different events that they'll provide passes. K-State has some different event passes that they are willing to provide. So we're kind of getting that package put together. And as you folks decided earlier this week, of course, Riley County has the cash incentive. Any of our partners can put together the non cash incentives and then approved applicants can receive those at any time. So again, we have three that we preapproved already, so if we add an incentive down the line, they would also get those. So. So probably gonna wind up being pretty popular and we'll probably move through this pretty quick, honestly. So. Yeah. So we're excited by that. So.
So we have three of them.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So.
Do they find the residence before they apply or is it, you know, place delivered or is that after they get?
That'll be.
Then they have.
Right. Yes, yeah. So they're not required to find the place before, you know, they apply. That's gonna just be part of when we do the whole MOU that you folks looked at. So that's why we did just a preapproval. Then, of course, they need to do their part of, yes, I now reside in Riley County. Here's my information about where I'm residing and then, you know, we can proceed from there. So. Yeah. Yeah, cuz all three, we're still kind of looking. Some might rent, some might buy, you know, cuz so it's kind of a, a combination. And there was at least one that had people they knew here. So. And then the other two were completely just. Looks like a good community. I'm sorry.
From where? What part of the country?
Gosh. You're testing me. Believe there was one from Georgia. I'd have to look. Honestly, I can't. I just can't remember off my head, but, but yeah, kind of, kind of spread, spread out there. So.
Find those.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's. Interesting.
Yep. Yeah. Happy to share that. Um, let's see. So we're gonna jump down to the Local Environmental Protection Program Grant, the LEPP Grant. I did receive the executed contract from KDHE. They sent that to me earlier this week with both Commissioner McKinley's signature and their person at KDHE. So we're now just waiting for funds disbursement. If you remember, it's $50,000 that, that the county will receive to assist low to moderate income property owners with repair and replacement of their wastewater systems. We already have a couple applicants from the previous round that we'll work with to get them taken care of. But we're just waiting for disbursement of funds from KDHE. My contact there, she was looking into that to see when that will, when that will arrive. So. But again, we have a couple folks we're already working with. And then we'll get that application out there again, just updated for this round and then out there again. But we'll use the same application process we did before. It worked just fine. So. So that one is coming. Let's see. So just a few other things. I too will attend KC with everybody next week, so that will be good. And then I'm gonna celebrate so much that the comprehensive plan is done. I'm gonna take the week after Christmas off.
Can't do that. I get started on it.
Alice. So any questions for me? Anything else you need or wanna talk about? Okay. Thank you so much.
Excellent. If they were. Non. Not.
That's. That's not funny, but yeah. All I got to say is Bad Heart's a Christmas movie.
We want volunteer.
I just. I just saw. Adventure. Connor, which is the. 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 The Tokyo building and. Down.
Back to.
Yeah.
But it's. Says it's. Round. If you.
But he didn't make the movie. He just started it.
Exactly.
And he's got dementia, so what the hell does he know? It's the Monday after Thanksgiving. Second Monday after Thanksgiving. Nobody's staying. Everybody ran out of being thankful.
Next one.
Okay.
But you know, there'll be another one next week. Exactly. Everybody's gone. You're holding out like. Next week. Amanda, how do you miss us there?
Damn. There's not.
No. Well, there's still members around the state though. Of course, Frank's gotta be there cuz she's president.
Do you have? I worked. I'm here today. Didn't mind. Didn't mind. When you. Those. But I just. That was enough. You didn't. For. I just. He did. Or the bear. How many? He. I don't. He. I think. Yeah. Never. Man is gonna stop. Yeah. She's gonna forget. John, you ready? I could never. John, you ready?
Somebody ready?
I don't see Dave here. No, I'm ready. It's good. Bit old. You're. Good. So. What do you wanna do?
I, I think. I don't know why I review into specs again and they, they seem reasonable for what we're asking for. Small utility tractor with a cab and a loader bucket. Some hydraulics in the back. To full brush mower and other things. So. Why we didn't get one? I think we'll go back and look at specs, have him call a couple of the vendors that we sent it to. We sent it to five different vendors. Two Bobcat, White Star. And Trayland. At Coys Brother, K O I S Brothers and Allied Solutions. We've sent five packets of information, bid packets to these individual companies. And why? I can't explain why. So. I guess we close them. I will have them go back and ask what was wrong. Why they didn't bid? Maybe read, adjust the specs and rebid it if we really think we want this tractor. Yeah, I, I can't. I mean, they may have been particular. I, I guess if they were specific to one brand. And why that brand didn't bid on it, I don't know. We'll, we'll. We'll go back and.
Yeah. Call them and see what's.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe they have the date confused or something.
Maybe, maybe a supply. I, I can't imagine the supply issue, but maybe it was what they had, what they wanted to. Let go of or what they had already accounted for somewhere else. But. Yeah, I, I had a loss myself. I've never had, had no bid before.
Usually get at least one.
What I expected, at least.
Maybe expand out and look maybe a little more regional.
Yeah, we have. One, Wichita, Lenexa, Wamigo, and I'm not sure where the other two. Something. So. Uh, thank you.
Yes. You. Some of this. It's. You. It's not known. I see. Okay.
They put it. Is. I imagine IT's not here.
It did not.
Well, they. Where, where, where did they put that?
Okay. Yeah.
Hey, just put it on here. There it is. That's a different way of doing it, but okay. Yeah, we found it. Teamwork.
I'm here.
Is that? That's. What? What came sent you? This is. That's what he sent me. Um, okay. That's what I got.
Okay. That's fine. We'll make it work.
All right.
We'll make it work.
Be. For you.
Supposed to be ten twenty.
Yeah, ten point.
In bed. Oh. That's the. Review. Last.
When you live in.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Vance and Riley County Councilor here today. You know, as we spoke a couple of weeks ago, we didn't have, of course, our legislative luncheon due to lack of interest. But in place of that, we've invited our lobbyists and Tom Bruno is here to go over kind of the expectations of moving into the 2026 legislative session. And then we'll have a good Q and A session to conclude. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Todd.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Carter, Dick is sick this morning. He sends his regrets. So really, we're gonna hit some of the high points and, and go over and, and move through it fairly quickly to get to questions because.
High points?
What's that?
Called them high points? I call them low points.
Well, Commissioner, you know, it, it all depends on your perspective, right?
Yes.
So. So these, these are basically gonna be the, the. So, so these, these are basically going to be the, the, the pieces that we touch on. But we know that we have midterm, we have the midterm election coming up. The Senate, they have two years remaining, so not a lot of change there. We do know, we're hearing rumors on who may or may not run again. Um, we, we've had, um. You know, those rumors will continue until we get closer and until that, that time, we, we really won't comment on a lot of that. Um, all the houses up, um. We are hearing rumors on those folks too. You probably are as well. If any of your locals are considering not running again, you're probably hearing those rumors. Um, don't put a lot of stock in those until filing deadline because people do change their minds. Um, of course, we have all of our statewide, the big ones, the governor's race. Um, I believe it's a total of nine candidates. It might be 10 at this point tomorrow. It could be a dozen. Um, of course. With, with the governor's office, you have the president of the Senate who is running. And also for the insurance commissioner, uh, race, you have the speaker of the house that's running. So kind of your top two legislative leaders are, are running for those seats. They've been in those positions for a couple of terms. Um, so it's typically a couple of terms and then up or out, right? So they are looking, they are looking to run for that. Governor's race will be interesting and there'll be a lot of political play in a variety of, of topics this year, I expect. Um, and then of course we have congressional redistricting, um, that was talked about this fall about possibly coming together. We fully expect them to dive in to that issue this year. Um, whether, whether that actually occurs at the end of the day is in my opinion doubtful because you need 84 signatures in the House to call a special session. They weren't able to get those 84 signatures to call the special session. If the governor were to veto any kind of redistricting, you need 84 votes to override that veto in the House. So it, it's very questionable, um, in my opinion. Now, I'm not part of those conversations that are going on amongst members right now. So maybe there are some minds being changed, but I, I just, at this moment, I don't see it. I do expect to see something come out of the legislature on that. But if it becomes law, in my opinion, is doubtful. Um, so all of those, the midterm elections will impact the conversations we're having on a lot of other topics, right? So what are some of those top? Well, number one is the budget. Um. What was the date? November 13th, the consensus revenue estimating group met. Um, they, it, you could say it's down for the projected imbalance over the next couple fiscal years. I mean, this fiscal year, as you can see, the, the expected imbalance is 1.8 billion. And then 1.1 by the next fiscal year on those projections. Um, how that kind of plays out is very dependent upon tax policy and, and the economy. So the other portion of this that is a challenge or is different from say, two years ago and before is the budget process. So last year, about this time, the legislature, they created a joint budget committee that came together and created a proposal, an initial proposal for a legislative version of the budget. They basically use that budget to build the final budget that they approved. Now, the governor is still responsible and required to submit a budget to the legislature, a budget proposal. She does that. She did that and they will do that again. The legislature did look at some of those proposals. Um, she, they did go through her budget proposal at a, at a fairly high level last year. Um, but pretty much use their budget. There were some compromises made through the process, but a lot of that of the governor's budget, they didn't really use. Um, that budget committee has met two times already. We'll meet again next week on the ninth and 10th or 10th and 11th. Now I got a number of committees going on in the next couple of weeks that are finalizing their proposals. So, um, they will meet next week and finalize their initial proposal for, uh, the legislative budget. Um, they aren't just flying blind. Uh, they have asked the various agencies to give to them to share what they requested through the governor's budget process. So those agencies have been sharing that. So we'll have a broad idea. It certainly will change again through the full process as it did last year. But how that appears and, and what it looks like exactly, um, is a little up in the air at the moment. We know that they want to keep spending as flat as possible, but they also, we also know and we legislators on that committee are acknowledging there are some definite needs out there that have to be addressed. Um, so from last year, well, we're, we're going to look back at last year. For the first time, there was an accelerated schedule. It was a challenge for all involved. Um, legislative staff, especially revisers were, were very challenged because when they accelerated that schedule, it's still 90 days. They just don't have the long, as long breaks or as many days off. So in the reviser's office who draft the bills, you had the same number of staff, you had almost the same number of requested uh, legislation, but deadlines were moved up. With the same number of staff and the same number of days, it became a challenge. Riley County had, had a, um, Jacob, what, what was the term of art you used earlier on the legislation that we requested last year? It got lost in the shuffle just because of the timing issue. Um, so short term, there you go. I call it VRBO or Airbnb, but short term rental is, is the appropriate one. So it's still 90 days, but it's accelerated without some of the longer breaks. Shortened deadline periods. To typically, historically, they've wanted to be done early mid-May. Last year they were done April 15th, somewhere in there. That's their goal again this year. And legislative leadership from both the House and the Senate have told me personally, they're going to be out of there before April 15th. So that's their goal. And if they put their mind to it, they can do it. So the basic budget was legislatively driven. Um, there were some, some portions of the governor's proposal. They look similar, but the legislature drove the bus. Tax policy, there were lots of tax discussions, right? We had income tax discussions. There were numerous vetoes. Um, finally, there was a, a, an override that was done. Property taxes will remain an issue. I'll get to that in a little bit. Um, they did create a water task force, which is a big issue in the state with the agriculture, both, both, uh, surface and groundwater issues that are out there. Um, again, no Medicaid expansion and it, a little unusual. There was no omnibus bill last year. Historically, they do a budget, take a break, get the spring consensus revenue estimate, estimates, and then come back and make adjustments in, in what's called an omnibus bill. Last year, they didn't do that because they didn't take a long break. They got done, they went home. So I expect to see some adjustments within the legislative budget proposal based upon some caseload estimates and things like that, um, that, that came out after they broke. So this year, what are we looking at? Property tax valuation issues. Um, this, a lot of legislature legislators feel like they, they pretty much did everything they can from the state budget perspective on property taxes. They did away with the state building fund. Um, and I think that was like two mills total what they did there. But any other changes they make have significant impacts on their budgeting abilities. So they are looking at a variety of conversation, uh, approaches to property tax. Um, how that conversation goes is very dependent on the perspective of the person you speak with. You speak to one person, it's, it's all doom and gloom and you speak to the other, another person and they're like, well, we have to find the right balance. So there's a lot of conversation. There is no clear direction at the moment. But we know it's property tax and how that whole process works together. Uh, the next piece is redistricting, as I touched on. You know, the, the big talk has been the third district, Johnson County, Windup County based. You know, are they really going to break? One of the proposals was, was to divide up Johnson County into three of the districts. Are you really going to do that? Well, we'll see what happens. So that's out there. That will takes a significant portion of the conversational air out of the room at times. Convention of states, there was a recent court decision, um, on how the votes could be used and, and what was required. We expect this to come back. I don't know how much, how much that will distract from other topics. Um, regulatory sandbox, that's been an ongoing conversation. Uh, potentially impacts local and state. Um, I, that will continue because that's a pretty organized effort. But legislators have been cautious about being too aggressive on that. Um, so that will continue. Economic development will, will maintain, will be an issue. There's conversations around star bonds, um, and, and a few other like H PIP and, and some of those tax incentives. Government efficiency, you know, part of that was started in response to what legislators saw coming out of DC. Um, there have been some committees, both the Senate and the House have government efficiency committees. Those have been meeting over the interim and, um, uh, what comes out exactly is unclear, but there have been some specific focused areas within state, state agencies, um, that people are looking at. Education, right? Biggest portion of the, uh, overall state budget. That will definitely be, uh, a topic of conversation. K-12, you know, they're looking and discussing different ways of creating that funding formula. Higher ed, it's important here. You know, the, I, there's a differing of opinions of what happens on higher ed. Some think that there might be a cut and some specific institutions may be a little more under the microscope than others. So we'll kind of have to wait and see. And again, we go back to the budget. How does it all fit together? Um, local control issues, uh, Dick was going to talk about some of those specifics. Um, and capers, they're going to look at capers. They always do because it's such a big portion. And that's the end of it. So I'm happy to try to jump deeper into any specific topics and questions you might have.
On, on the redistricting, it drove in last one passed. Through the courts, they're not, I hope they're waste too much time. But they had trouble getting that last one passed, the one in 2012. This one didn't go through the courts, did it?
Uh, no. Well, they all get cha, they almost always get challenged by someone. It's whether the courts take up any serious, um, like look at it. Well, so. So in 2022, you had, you, you had the census and then you had the follow-up requirement. This is optional. So in 2022, there, there's a lot, there was a lot. And typically in the normal course of business, when they do redistricting, there's a lot of conversations about, hey, are you retiring? Can we, you know, can we redraw your district? And you've got congressional, you've got state representative and you have state senate. Here they're only talking about congressional. Yeah. So the conversation there is how do we create a more Republican third district? That they thought they created three years ago, now four. That, so I think that if they take it up, which I'm expecting them to do, I think there is a plan that's being fine tuned right now and that whenever it happens, it'll, it'll happen fairly quickly in the process. Because I don't expect them to have to get to 27 in the Senate and they, they're going to have it on the plan, whatever it is. I don't think they get to 84 in the House, so they're not going to be as it, 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 it's not as challenging of a negotiation process to get to those votes that you need um, through the process on the congressional side, um, at this point. As it would be in a normal redistricting year. It's going to take up a little bit of time, but those conversations amongst leadership have been going on. So I think they generally have a plan figured out that they want to propose out there. So it's not going to suck out all the oxygen. So.
Think if I remember right, they were somewhere between six and eight seats short on getting to that veto proof threshold.
Yeah, it's, it's in that, it's in that and it depends on.
That's pretty significant.
I mean, they say the Senate said, uh, Senate President Masterson said he had the 27 signatures for, for for their, what they needed to call a special session, but nobody really knows. I mean, I believe him. There's no reason for him to say it if he doesn't, but nobody knows for sure. All right. Until you see the petition that's been signed and submitted, you don't know. So in the House, again, we know some of the folks, well, I know two of them who have told me they, they weren't going to sign and didn't, and they got a lot of pressure. So it's six to eight, eight to 10, somewhere in that number that they were short. So whether they can get to the veto proof majority, I, I doubt it in the House. But again, when you talk a special session, they had to approve half a million dollars for a special session. So some folks may have said, I don't want to sign this because it's such a waste of money.
And they spent $40,000 or something with some special software goes along with it. That's probably part of the 500,000.
Yeah, I, I think that was part of it. So potentially, potentially they approved it, but maybe haven't spent. I don't think they spent that either. So um, hopefully that doesn't take all the air out of the room. I mean, I think that's a quick hit and move on. So.
You mentioned earlier that the short term rental statutes just kind of lost their way last season. Is there a focus on that again, hopefully this upcoming session?
Well, we, we have, we have the draft. I got the draft finally after the deadlines, about three weeks after the deadlines. I believe I sent it to you. Um, uh, we will, we will go to the committee chair and ask for the introduction. But again, with the accelerated schedule, it's not just the end date. It's when they move all those deadlines and what else they have in front. Because they do have a couple of things in front, uh, that they were working on last year that they ran out of time. And it was local government specifically is, is where I went because that's a friendlier committee. Um, and if you go to judiciary, you've got, you've just got a multitude of issues that they're dealing with. Um, local governments friendly or committee, you can have more of that conversation where most of those members have served in some local capacity. So they understand the perspective and, and take that uh, perspective into the legislature and can, can kind of understand things better. So I will, I'll talk to the chairs and, and see if they're, what the else they have on their plates and see what we can do. But this is more. It's more of a judiciary issue when we talk about it in the legislature. But if we want to be successful, we try to find a successful path. And that's not always that more technically correct committee because they have so much stuff and they can get bogged down on things.
I would, uh, like to get your ideas on, on property tax. There's been a lot of discussion. We've got to do something where, you know, what kinds of proposals do you think will come out of that?
So there are. There's a lot of proposals. You know, there's the capping, uh, the annual valuation. There's, there's putting back in basically a tax lid. There's budget limitation and stuff. There's a lot. Um. I, Chairman Smith, um, from Western Kansas recently put on, um, a post on Facebook and it, it, it was fascinating read. Um, that talked about the complexities and he's a former county commissioner. And the complexities of trying to do something on property taxes, which. the complexities of trying to do something on property taxes, which which everyone agrees we wish we could do something about. But we still have to balance the needs of the citizens and the requirements that the state requires on counties or cities or any other local municipality, local unit. At the same time, right, trying to find a way to to minimize any increases and ideally flatten or reduce. So there are so many ideas that are being bandied about right now. Whether something happens in the end, I honestly, at this moment, I don't know. I just don't see it. We know we're going to see the constitutional amendment pop back up, at least on one side. There'll probably be some adjustments in that. You know, there have been some suggestions on how to make it a little more palatable. But I don't know. I just doubt that that gets there. So there's a lot of ideas. But not a lot of, not a lot of coalescing around one singular solution at the moment. So.
Seems like we've got to do something and most of the proposals do they know what do they understand property tax? Most of them.
Commissioner, I think you're asking me a trick question.
I think I know the answer. I don't mind it. It's all right, but it just seems to like some thing, oh, we got to do something, but it.
Well, when 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 you think about the system and as it exists today generally, right, you have, you have three different classes or four, three or four classes of property, depending on how you look at them. Right? And they all have a little bit different approach. So everyone, well, not everyone, a lot of people believe they have a handle on the residential and the commercial. Maybe the industrial. Nobody has a great handle on use value, ag use value, right? So and that that is very secular, right? It's a seven year, eight year rolling average. And then on top of that, you have, you have your state assessed side of things. So there's a lot of pieces that that go into that and it becomes quite a challenge. And to have 165 plus one, the governor come up with a solution that works is is quite a challenge. I've said for a number of years, I, because I also represent some agriculture. I've said for years, I think that something I'm worried, I should say, I'm worried that we're going to have a we're going to have to go back to statewide reassessment at some point and nobody will be happy when that happens.
I'm just curious, wanting to do something as change to the taxes, have they even considered reevaluating all of the exemptions in the state of Kansas? All these statutory statutes, I mean, over 40% of the valuation in Riley County alone is exempt from that puts a heavier burden on taxpayers, which they're feeling. And so.
There have been some conversations around that. I look back several years ago, I don't remember now how many. They did some of that regarding energy production. They've looked at that from time to time, but political realities being what they are. You know, that that gets only so far.
Conversations with one of the local legislators that you and I disagree 100% on it, like that's, you know, and we we get a lot, you know, it's not somebody we're, you know, neither one sees the other side.
Yeah, it it is a challenge because the state, most of their, set aside K 12 education, which when you look at their documentation, that 20 mills, they always put on the local school district. When I was on my school board, I tried to remind them if I got to set the mill levy, let me set the mill levy. I'm happy to take the blame. This is the state's money because it goes to the state and then they divide it. It's the state's funding. So just take that 20 mills off the top. All the other stuff. Okay, that is local. Work with us. Either don't require local units to do certain things that cost this cost money. Or give us other tools in the toolbox that'll that help us fund this. I mean, if you're going to require it, and when, again, when I was on my school board, people used to say, oh, just ignore state state requirements. I don't make those laws. I don't have that luxury. I'm required. I swore an oath. I have to. I can't just say I'm not going to do this because state law requires it. I have to. And that's where, that's where there's disconnect I at times with with the legislators and local governments because they haven't, a lot of them haven't sat in these seats and they don't require. You have a fiduciary legal obligation to follow the law. Period. You're not making state law. You're enforcing and administering it. You don't have that luxury of ignoring. So those requirements that cost money, they need to give tools in the toolbox to fund it. And if they don't want to expand the number of tools or give you flexibility to be creative, then we get in the situation that we have.
Is there, is there any serious conversation about doing anything on caper country?
That's a Carter question. He follows capers really closely. So he would be the right one. I'm sorry. I don't have an answer for that. But if he's watching, which I hope he is.
He is.
Yeah, I told you he was going to yell at me. Dick, you can answer that question. So so I don't know.
And the the other topic I brought up to different associations is you know, maybe trying to get some legislation that requires state agencies to maintain their properties better, such as wildlife and parks ground is one big example. Do you think there's any opportunity to do anything on that?
Only if you get some of the larger ag organizations, you know, I mean, when they have gotten involved in some of those issues in the past, things have happened, but you know, that's always because it may be not a good neighbor situation and I just, I don't know at this moment. Again, an accelerated schedule, shortened deadline periods becomes a challenge and there will be a lot of things that may need to be addressed until their crisis mode at the legislative side, they just kind of fall off to the side.
Yeah, go ahead.
One thing you mentioned was, you know, state, you know, amended mandates. And one of the things that the treasurer's office has been trying to on the last, I think this is our third, third or fourth session is our motor vehicle fees. Just wanted you to keep an ear out here. I I think we're going to be submitting another bill this time. And once again, with the accelerated timeline. And but that you talked about reducing property tax, if we could get a significant portion of performing work on behalf of the state, we could get our fees to be able to cover those costs. We wouldn't have to rely on out of form taxes. And so it's, it's a big issue for the traders and just like, can you keep your ears open?
So there was a significant effort last year and there was a lot of progress and I felt like that they were going to get there. And then something at the end kind of, and and again, that may have been part of the timing factor. I've heard a number of times since then, trying to remember who it was. But there, there was an effort out there and there is acknowledgement and understanding that something has to be done amongst the legislators. I mean, so that that issue I think will will remain active this year.
You try to, you try to read or not necessarily treasurer's issue, but it's accounting issue.
Right.
We really would like to reduce the abnormal taxes that are required to fund the office. And so we are working a little hard with our association and trying to get this, get this fast as well.
Thanks, Tom.
No, thank you. Well, he's watching from the end.
Sure, my phone thing going off. That's why it turned out the interruption.
Ready?
You're not, are you?
Yeah. Man, you're really trying to not sun stuff.
Get out of sight of this stuff, yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. Here to present a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Geo temp notes. So a while ago, you had authorized for the Peterson Ranch Benefit District to renew those, the roads. And then we also passed a resolution to authorize the solid waste project. And so in that, we were working with bond counsel and our financial advisor to go out to bid for these projects. We did it in one temporary note. These were the bids that we received back. So we had Cow Valley State Bank, R C P, R C B Bank and Commerce Bank. And these were the interest rates that were quoted to us. Originally, when we went out to bid, the total was $1,020,000. After Peterson Ranch kind of came in lower, we, the total financing amount came to $935,000 just for the principal, not the interest. So the fiscal impact would total $963,530.49 for debt. And staff will work with bond counsel to assess the specials to Peterson Ranch Benefit District. And then the remaining note would be paid from solid waste for the tipping floor project. Are there any questions?
Go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution 120425, authorizing issuance of general obligation temporary notes for the total principal amount of 935,000.
I'm second to that.
Been moved and second to approve resolution 120425, authorizing issuance of general obligation temporary notes for I County and about total amount bill principal amount of 935,000.
This is the file, this is for the chair and myself to sign the chair's sort of notes. And this here is the file of resolutions for all three, assigning including the chair. Did you with Amy, Commissioner Sherman or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Morning Commissioners, Amy Mangus, Registered Dead. I am here today to present an overview of Notary Fraud Alert Service and to request your approval of the service agreement with Fiddler Technologies. Property fraud continues to be a growing concern nationwide. And it occurs when individuals illegally transfer ownership of real estate using forged or deceptive documentation. And one of the most common elements of these fraudulent filings are the misuse of notary credentials. So criminals forge notary signatures, reproduce or digitally copy notary seals and insert legitimate notary information into documents that a notary never signed. So the consequences of this include property theft, financial loss and long and costly legal complications. To help address this issue, I am proposing the adoption of Notary Fraud Alert, a new service offered through Fiddler Technologies. This would be a free subscription service to notaries. They would receive daily, weekly or monthly summaries of recorded documents bearing their name. The notifications would come directly from our office. And while it doesn't prevent fraud, it allows notaries to detect impersonations early and act quickly to limit damage. We currently already offer Property Fraud Alert Services, which notifies residents any time a document is reported with their registered name. Notary Fraud Alert would complement this by protecting the integrity of the notarial process itself. Together, these services will strengthen security for notaries, property owners and support our ongoing efforts to protect the integrity of our records. There is a one-time licensing and setup fee of $8,000. Ongoing annual maintenance and support of 1750. And the funding is available through the Registered Dead Tech Fund so that I am not requesting any additional funds from the county. Are there any questions?
Well, and this is a free service to our services.
Correct, correct. We would, yeah, we would take the cost.
Heads on TV, you know, sign up with this, but that's.
So we already have an option for residents. So this would be for notaries. They could sign up with our county. They just rolled this out, I think in the third quarter of this year, and there's about 20 counties across 10 states that currently offer this with, I think Sedgwick, Florida and Miami in Kansas have it. And basically notaries can just sign up to get alerts, will start indexing their names. So then they can choose to have a daily, weekly or monthly report showing them what was recorded and then they can compare it to their logbook.
A lot of people don't even think about.
No, they don't. Well, and with all the records being online, you know, it's so easy for people to pull up documents and pull all the information they need off of them and then use it however they choose to.
So they just go to the local notaries or how how big of a spread do you get with that word?
Any notary can sign up for it. So I don't know, even if you have a lot of remote notaries nationwide that know they're recording in Riley County, they can they can sign up for the alerts and.
One of the property fraud, you know, works.
I'm sorry?
I said the property, one of the existing property fraud alerts.
It does work. It does work.
Right. Well, I'm house. I got notes sitting when I sold the other one. I got notes saying, are you sure this is, actually, by each of them saying, are you sure? You know, this is really happening. So.
Yeah, I've been really pleased with it.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the notary fund alert service agreement with Fiddler Technologies.
I'll second. Been motioned, mooted, seconded to approve the notary fraud alert service agreement with Fiddler Technologies. All in favor?
Thank you very much.
We can come back at noon. I said we could go through this.
I know. We could come back at noon when you're done.
Yeah.
I need to.
Right, he stopped and thinking company was playing.
We need to get him some of those couple tunnel braces, I think. He might have phoned it at you.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, yes.
All right, good morning Commissioners, David Adams, EMS Ambulance Director, along with Russell Stuckey, County Fire District Number One Emergency Management Director, and then Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director, is here to discuss a departmental consolidation proposal. So as you know, Chief Stuckey is retiring on around October 1st of 2026. The three of us, along with other county staff and our respective leadership teams, have discussed what his well-deserved retirement means to Riley County Fire District Number One in Emergency Management, and how we can leverage this opportunity to strengthen our respective departments. So before you, as our document or leadership teams have put together outlining our proposal to consolidate Riley County Fire District Number One Emergency Management and Riley County EMS into one department proposed called Emergency Services. This will allow for many advantages, as outlined in your document, while, if approved, will provide an opportunity for combined training position to address a need for EMS and County Fire while still saving the Riley County taxpayers approximately $120,000 per year. So, and then as Commissioner McKinley said this morning in his comments, the, are, the three of us, along with the leadership team from County Fire, met with the County Advisory Board on Tuesday evening, outlined the proposal, opened it up to questions and answers, had a lot of very good discussion. They had questions, they had concerns, they had, you know, just wanting some more detail on some areas. We provided that to them, satisfied them, and they endorsed this proposal as well. So, that is kind of where we're at, and I was going to open it up to any questions or discussion you may have. I, I will say too, we did reach out to Jacob as far as fire chief duties and statutes, and he's indicated that he has no concerns. We've also, Russell did reach out to the State Fire Marshal, and they gave back some duties of a fire chief, again, no concerns. So, wanted to throw that out as well.
But through that process is going to take some extra accreditation.
For, for me, there would be, yes, for me, I, we haven't completely finalized the job description, but we do know that I will become, it will be in the job description that I will become an emergency manager. And as I talk to the Fire Advisory Board, I will go through the probationary period for the County Fire Department. I think that's important for me to, to learn the lingo, for me to be able to be involved. And they, they were very happy with that, but that's, that's some of that accreditation that I'll have to go through.
We decided to do that because it's important to Riley County. Nobody is not required by state or by any law, so, you know, we're, we're talking about business and fire marshal. We've got all of those bases covered, and then we want to make sure we go the extra mile for what the services for Riley County.
And, and then just to kind of frame it for the public, you know, basically what we're talking about doing is, you know, my, as the Commissioners know, my current position description is Emergency Services Director slash Fire Chief. And so basically, what we're talking about doing is taking the operational Fire Chief role off of my job description and moving it down to a Division Chief level, and then taking the EMS Director, which David currently is, and moving his administrative responsibilities over to the Emergency Services Director's job description. And so, overall, the new position, or the, not new position, it's already a position. The modified position would be administrative for fire, administrative for EMS, and then still be administrative and operational both for emergency management, for severe weather events, for, for E O C activations, emergency operations center activations, and those kind of things, and then that, that fourth responsibility that's in there, the 911 Administrator, would kind of be shared. The, the new Emergency Services Director, presumably David, would be the 911 Administrator with support from the Emergency Management Coordinator, which is currently Lori, and then, and then one of the deputy, current Deputy Chiefs, love, would do a lot of the groundwork, the hands-on work as far as that type of, of thing. So it would basically taking the two department head positions, combining them into one, and then redistributing some of those duties below, and then adding the Training Officer in to take some of the training responsibilities off of the management staff, so that they would have the capacity to do this. So we wouldn't add any people, we still have the same number of bodies, just realigning the position.
Well, he's saying, he's saying one new, it's same number, so.
You'll have a new position, but it's the same number of people for some.
Same number of positions. Same number of positions and same number of employees, just re-designated.
Well, I, I don't like, I, I like this plan, but I am concerned about, you know, services to the citizens, you know. The safer money is not a big, big, I mean, it's always an issue.
Sure.
I'm really concerned about services that, are you going to be willing to go out in the middle of the night and find, find, be in charge of that, those, those kinds of things.
So, I won't be operational in that regard. That's why we have the chiefs who are that operation. So, now, am I willing to be? Absolutely, and I, and I will, when I, you know, absolutely, because that is part of my overarching responsibility. But we have fire chiefs who are responsible and who will run those scenes. You know, I've, I've been EMS Director here for almost 10 years. I've never showed up on a scene and taken command, because I have subject matter experts for that. I'm, you know, if I show up on a scene, I'm there to provide some expertise, or I'm there to carry equipment to do whatever my staff need. So, operational, in charge of that, that, that's not, that's not for me.
But Catherine, your point, that is the main focus, is the effectiveness of service. And so, these people sitting in the back row here, these four, they have really been tasked on designing what that looks like. And a size fire goes specifically, they'll be adding a half of an extra person that will be responding with them. EMS, maybe not as much response, because they already have that coverage. But, although Russell does respond, you know, in his halftime, they will have that position of a Training Officer as well. When we laid out all of the duties that they are needing, it was not administrator. They need, they need less administrator, and they need more of this operational structure. So we moved that down into the operations to better serve the citizens.
And then, like I said, the one exception to that is on the Emergency Manual side, right? Which Lori is, you know, and, and Robert. You know, that won't change too much from my current job description.
Right.
That, that will all pretty much stay the same, and that will be the one, the one leg of the stool that this position, the Emergency Services Director, still would be operational.
I guess for me, it's more of a concern of the, the timeline on this and how that transition works.
Sure.
There's never a transition that works.
It should be, it's in your packet, I believe, of page, page 105. So, the, what we're, what we're proposing is, I would start in, in that we would start the transition, especially for me, it's beginning of the year in January, so, giving ourselves plenty of time. So, I'll make some, we'll make some changes internally in our department, and I'll, I'll turn over my operations to Josh and Alex, so that I can start the training, I can start the emergency management training, I can start learning and starting going to some of these meetings with Russell and his team. So, and then, that, that gives us about six or seven months of that transition between inside our departments. And then, we would fully implement this, or go live with this, if you will, on August 1st. And that would, those last two months would be where Russell would be taking a step back. I'll take more of a, of a hands-on approach to the job while he's still here to help answer those questions.
You basically have two months of that overlap kind of training, because Russell is literally, literally down in another department head, kind of the counselor, whatever. He would not be, be the point person, but he'd be the go-to question guy. The reason we want to start so early in January with, with David's position, because it is a significant change. And so, if you can start reading out what the job descriptions look like, what his responsibilities are, what the training is. We did a very similar program when EMS came over from the hospital. I, I wasn't here, none of us, except that he, maybe Rich was.
Rich was.
But we had that lead time.
I think Rich's been here since Big Chief Tab.
Then we need that time to really make the transition smooth. And then first, any issues that we have, the two of them will be able to work out. The time.
So you're going to have, we write all the job descriptions.
We, we, yeah, we've took, and we've already begun, I mean, we're, we're fairly far along into this.
These guys have all worked together as a group, really their job descriptions have come down, written through these guys, and now they're in my course to look at and present to you all.
And that's one thing I, that was good. It wasn't just these two guys deciding how it's going, you know, they involved, that it's always involved to make sure who was the one. So that was, you know.
As David mentioned, and Commissioner McKinley was there, we met with the Fire Advisory Board, obviously, there's some concerns, and you're never going to please everybody, but the vast majority were, the consensus was in favor.
And I think they saw, and there was in common, since they saw what we saw, and that it's actually going to elevate our ability to serve in fire and EMS, and consistently continue to serve. So. And help us with training, help us with succession planning. This is a place for anyone who's an EMS or fire to move back to if they have them.
Also, the fact that they're across the street from each other now.
Right.
Sat here, that was difficult, but the way it's set up now, it's going to make it easier for everything.
Absolutely.
And Catherine mentioned, and I know it isn't your primary concern, but so that the public is aware, if you approve this, there, we do project a cost-saving by merging, taking out one administrator. I agree with you, that isn't the main point, but it is one of the aspects of the.
What we'd be getting? Sending out publicly, you know, Vivian will be sending out stuff saying, this is what's going on, so, but everyone starts saying, but, but publicly, that didn't change anything.
Didn't change anything there.
We need to reinforce, we're not, you know, factor, we're not doing anything that's going to bother them.
Right, yeah, they're, they're not losing any service at all, you know, and we feel very strongly that we're actually gaining service through this. So, we are absolutely making this more efficient and more effective, and, and a lot more cross, crossword with our agents. Yeah, so we've, we've already started working on that yesterday in, in anticipation of something like this, so. Yeah, and then Vivian and I talked again last night, so.
And we're, that's a message that she has to just repair, so we would want to get ahead of that. Now, if it turns, and she will announce it.
So when you get into this and changing all of these job descriptions, and you decide, you know, you know, something goes wrong, somebody doesn't want to do, all of a sudden, we're going to start losing people. Would you be able to go back?
I, I don't think we're going to lose anybody, especially from our administrative teams, because they're all bought in. So, this was 100% buy-in from everybody in that room. So, and because we've had very frank discussions about this, and they were skeptical, we were all kind of skeptical when this was brought forward. Have very frank discussions, had a lot of discussions. And like Elizabeth said, they helped write those job descriptions so that we all understand how it works. So, I'm, I'm very confident and I'm very comfortable, I'll speak for them, that, that they're all bought in, and we're, we're, we are good to go and eager to move forward.
And Catherine, I completely agree, David, that we have worked through and talked through and had very frank discussions. And also, that was a concern that the, the Fire Advisory Board had, so what about if you run into a challenge? So we, we are going to have to implement and reevaluate and, and.
Adjust.
And adjust. And so we'll bring those issues to you, you know, and we'll bring solutions from, from this group. We'll bring you those solutions, and I don't think we'll ever, we won't have to go back, but we may have to make adjustments.
Right.
There's going to be road bumps.
Sure, there is.
That's why we've got a nine-month transition to two weeks.
Yep, well, that, that's what I, you know, as I've used analogy, you, you drowned by jumping into the deep end, you know, and then we're going slow, and we're going to do this right. Just like when we came over from the hospital, I became, I became an employee five months before we've transitioned. So, because we knew that we were going to have road bumps, and we knew that there were some things that we didn't know. This is a little different, we know pretty much everything, you know, that's in front of us. But we did it that way, I brought Josh over before we went live, you know, because there were things that he needed to work on, and it worked. And so that's why we're confident with this kind of a timeline, it's going to work.
Presentation, so, that's already.
Right. No other questions or comments, so. I'll make a motion to approve the consolidation of Fire EMS and Emergency Management into a single Emergency Services Department.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve consolidation of Fire EMS and Emergency Management into a single Emergency Services Department.
Thank you Commissioners.
And the, and the one other thing to clarify is, you know, there will still be three, four different budgets. You know, it's not all one budget, the Fire District does its own Fire taxing District, and, and EM and EMS are both general fund. So they're all, it's not one budget, there's three different budgets, four if you count the 911 budgets.
Miss one?
Somebody.
I'll write you a check for the steak and lobster phone.
There's so many of them, so we can't.
Same one, I had, oh, we have one more thing, you know.
We don't have any games.
What's that? We have, the letters have always been, it's the game that you get. Rubbing it in. I have another pass to land.
So it's broken me. About my tradition, so I do the new.
I'm not gambling on that. I didn't, you just never know, wait, now it is 32. That's even the consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I watched it.
I didn't see it, what was it on, YouTube, I couldn't see it.
It was, well, part of it, the part of it, the line was on, it's live on, that everybody did.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
But then I was, I don't remember, I found some online, I think they say, and they said it's got, it's got a shade going. We have a YouTube, they say.
I've got one thing, yeah, just want to make a suggestion. When we have this legislative update, we need more than 20 minutes.
More what?
We need close to an hour at least. So there's plenty of stuff to discuss at this point in time, we can't, granted it. Presentation alone should take 20 minutes plus, and we're going to all have questions, so we, we need to plan for an hour, and I'm just doing it towards the end of whatever. That we give the ample time, okay, in the future. I don't think we really covered our bases today, so.
That's definitely an intention to be a point. And I think scheduling wise, towards the end of the present December, people are not necessarily the present as often, so we got to fit it in real quick. It's just, I'm thinking about, this is where they got sent. Well, the intention is awesome, it's to get it, right, it's not like that.
Okay.
Well, maybe next session we can.
I had some questions I wanted to ask too, but I held, held back due to that. But I, I would suggest trying to set that up towards the end, other than being, so we can stand on that thought.
We be, do we normally have an update during this session?
We do usually. We do usually, well, it's usually somewhere in April, but with the.
It was usually when they had the break, yeah.
But they don't. So, you might work with Tom and Dick and find a, a good, good time, and that, that might be reasonable.
Yeah.
Yes, schedule about an hour for that, and it's going to be hard to do within the meeting, but, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, I would make a motion to adjourn the seventh meeting of the Riley County Commission.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn.